I want to welcome you to a regular meeting of the Enfield Planning and Zoning Commission for Thursday, May 15, 2014, and to call a meeting to order, please join us, us, us look to the flag.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
In case of fire, there are two ways that you will exit the chambers. To my left, you exit through the chamber doors, turn left, walk down one flight of stairs, then outside of the building. Or perhaps the best way for you is to exit the chambers is through the doors at the rear. In either case, once you're outside of the building, please walk a safe distance away from the building. Will the secretary please call the roll?
Charles Durin.
Present.
Elizabeth Ballard.
Here.
Peter Falk here, Kathleen Sarnow.
Here.
Lori Longy, Nicholas Fakis, Charles Ladd, Ronald Gregory.
Here.
Alan Dryden.
Here.
Dominic Climo.
Two absent commissioners will have, Altona Dranin and Altona Gregory will be sitting in for the absent commissioners. Approval of minutes, March 6 are not available.
That one's me, but we're gonna pass them back to the, to the transcription company and have them take another swing at it, now that we've sort of settled everything there.
Okay, May 1. Before we get into that, I found a lot of problems with it, and I thought we'd settled all this, but I, so we, we'll have a motion on the floor to approve.
Move to approve the minutes of May 1.
Second.
All right, discussion, any additions, errors, or omissions.
Page, go ahead.
Well, let's, I'll start with page one, what I have, because page one, under absent, where I state that Ron Gregory would be sitting in, misspelling. Spelled correctly all the way else, but, okay. Page 2, last sentence, Chairman Durin reiterated that cease and desist orders are a last resort. I don't believe I said that, I said the fines were a last resort. Page 3, 1, 2, 3, 4th paragraph down, second sentence, front of buildings in town, reclassify vehicles that are parked in front of homes in town. I guess buildings are all right, but, we were talking about the military vehicles, I believe. Page 5, we usually, on page 5, the motion passed unanimously with a 4-0-0 vote, that was for the waiver, and then it says Commissioner Gregory made a motion with the following conditions, and on the list is 19. Now, these are used legally, they always should be there, they always had been.
So, what we'll do is look at the language, last week, I think what we had was with the fa, with the conditions from the letter, with the addition of a condition, such and such.
Well, yeah, but sometimes we eliminate some, so, that's, because these are used, and if that's all it is, it's gonna say that's what we've got.
Right, right, so it's a, I think it's a matter of format here, that do we want it, do you want them to all be in there?
Well, they were, last time we approved, they always had been.
Last time they were, just the changes were in there, so we had done, because we've done it, we were trying to figure this one out still.
There's no way to know what the others are unless they're here.
Well, they're all.
Well, they're all in the approval letter, that goes into our file.
Yeah, but if they go to court, this is going.
And so's the letter.
Well, they're supposed to be in the minutes.
But we can.
They always have been, even the last ones we approved were that way, I'm sure, because...
But they're all like that.
Yeah, no, that's right.
Yeah, like only 9 and 28, or this one, you know.
Right, so, because I think the way it was...
No, you changed it from the last ones we approved, because we said they were finally right, the way we wanted them.
Yeah, and they had, but they did just go through the, the changes in that list. So, we can go forward with all the conditions copied in, we can do that, that's fine.
Page 6, it's 9 and 28, who knows what the others are.
That's gonna be a lot of pages, though, with every...
No, they always have been, all the conditions are always listed afterwards, yeah, because...
But we can, I mean, yeah, we can go back to that, that's fine, we just wanna...
That way you don't have to explain exceptions, or additions, or deduct, subtraction.
Somebody is supposed to read these, and they're supposed to have everything there.
Yeah, that was, I think we just had, didn't have that quite clearly spelled out in our instructions, so we'll, we'll resolve that.
Well, yeah, but they were, last set that we approved, I'm sure they were there.
No, they had just done the, the changes, all of them?
What?
Am I missing that?
Is this last time?
It was approved on 5-1.
Maybe I...
Conditions met since signing of plans, page 8, you got listed 1 through...
Oh, it does list them all?
Oh, yes.
Oh.
This is...
Sorry, that's...
5-1.
Then I'm forgetting.
They approved on 5-1. It lists the 12, it's 14, 22 conditions, right after.
Okay, so I think we just have been inconsistent, so we'll do it, all the conditions, and we'll add that in our instructions.
Conditions have to be in here.
So, I'm gonna just put that note down for all, all of the applications here, that...
April 3.
I mean, and if they change them, that's differently, because that would be in the motions, anyway.
Right, so what I think it'll be is the, that it'll say as amended.
They've been done that, like that.
Oh, I'm sorry?
So, we would say, when they're, when they're making this list, that it'll say, with the following conditions, and then they'll copy the clean version, because I, what I'll do is, what I've been doing is giving them the clean version, with all the changes and additions typed in.
The clean version is not good, because that clean version carries no legal weight.
Right, that, that's what goes to the transcriptionist who puts it into the minutes.
Well, it shouldn't, what you should send is the corrected version, if there's things taken out.
The version that's completed after the meeting.
Right, right, not, not what you, not what you've suggested to us.
No, no, we, what we do is we edit them, and then in the morning, after the, Friday morning after the meeting.
The edited one.
We send them to the transcription company.
Right, like where we've made changes, and you put in the, in the changes, yeah.
Right, yeah, so that if you add conditions 22 and 23, that all 23 show up in here.
Okay, that's that, and then the last one was...
Page 7.
Page 7 at the bottom.
Yeah.
It says you were allowed to handle administratively, administratively, a modification at the House at 50.
There's a paragraph, section of a paragraph that just admitted there.
Something's missing.
Oh, yes, 50 has marked, it's the street.
Is there anything else beside the street, and does that paragraph end with that, or is there any more that's missing?
But, yeah, there is, because, the next page, it's conditional, that dealt with the towers, the water towers on Enfield Street, I believe.
Yeah, the next topic is missing, too, following that.
So, I would propose that these be tabled, but...
They can make a motion that we table the minutes, second.
Yeah, I know, and I just...
Sorry, I'm not catching everything you're saying.
Well, page, it goes, it was just pointed out, and I had it down, too, it goes from page 7 of 8, to the last page, which says 5 of 5.
And whatever comes, whatever becomes before that, at the top of page 5 of 5, is missing, the, what we're acting on, just says you made a motion, but it doesn't indicate what it...
Well, it could be on 8 of 8.
No, that's, that's continuation of the applications we received, actually.
So, I, I don't know, but it needs to be worked on. The motion's tabled, the tables had to be able all in favor.
You doing a roll call, then?
I'm sorry, go ahead, you can, but it's...
Charles Durin.
4.
Elizabeth Ballard. Peter Falk, 4, Kathleen Sarnow.
4.
Ron Gregory.
4.
Alan Dryden.
Yeah, 4.
Okay, those, those minutes are tabled.
Okay.
Staff report, Assistant Town Planner.
600. Okay, okay.
People missed a meeting at the fire station, you missed a nice meeting, and I want to compliment Rachel, she did a great job, and she has a program that she showed us, and will be shown to the people of Thompsonville, hopefully will attend the meeting when it's being held.
Yes, so there's a few things to, to announce, and we'll start with that, so we had, our last workshop was Thursday, May 8, and we went over, we focused on the Thompsonville rezoning and a progress update, so that was, we focused mainly on Thompsonville Village Residential, and went through all of the language, and there were some really great ideas to finish that up, and so I think that is actually, that's polished enough, and we have it here as an application to be received, so we can actually get it to public hearing. Before we go to public hearing, we've invited all property owners who will be affected to a meeting, that's just gonna be an informational meeting, and we'll be having that next Wednesday, the 21st, and we'll do it at Bigelow Commons, so it's a little bit more relaxed and informal, and of course, the public is fully invited, and we will be posting a publication for that. If the crowd gets too big, we'll have to move over here.
Wednesday, the 21st.
At 6:00 p.m.
6 o'clock.
Do you need our attendance, or is it optional, or do you not need it?
Optional?
Okay.
Yeah, I think it would be, it would be great to have a couple of members there to, you know, hear their ideas and questions, but we're gonna encourage anyone who comes to that meeting to also come to the public hearing and, and give formal comments, as part of the process.
As many as, as possible, yes, it would be...
It'll be an item on an agenda, so, are we, are we prohibited, in any way, from...
Oh, that's a good question.
Hearing comments, or commenting on attendance?
Well, as how many that are there, I just wouldn't make any comment.
Okay.
But you can sit and gather information.
I'll, I'll look into it.
I think...
Because it's your thought, we would take this up at the next meeting?
Right.
First meeting in June, thank you.
Yes, so the, the idea is that this will give those owners a chance to really hear everything first, and give feedback, so that if anyone can't make it to that, to the public hearings, that we'll have those comments in advance, and really give them a chance to see everything before, before there's a chance of, there's the potential for a vote, that they'll have that first opportunity to really get to see everything.
Maybe you should check and see if we should be there.
Yeah, I'll, I'll look into that.
Not have an informational, not have any of us, as long as you don't participate in any discussion, which is another problem, because somebody asks you something, and...
Yeah, but since it's an initiative from the commission, it's sort of a, I'm not sure how that works. I'll, I'll ask the town attorney, what the situation is there. So, that will be May 1, May 21st, we're very excited, I think, I think that's in, that that set of regulations, that proposal's in really good shape, and hopefully, the public will agree, but we'll happily hear comments contrary to that as well. The next thing to talk about, the other things, actually, just to fall off on that, the last things we talked about at that meeting, we, we went through a few bigger picture things that we're working on related to the mixed-use district, we talked about unit sizes, some other specifics of multifamily, live-work units, designing for the human scale, and how we can work that into our regulation changes, and...
Complete streets?
Complete streets, sort of, processes. So, we looked at some bigger ideas to, to get feedback on some concepts, and we're gonna continue to work on that over the summer, and actually, we have, we now have a parking study consoling in place, Nelson Nygaard is going to be doing our parking study, and they, they had a representative there at the meeting who was gonna use all the feedback from that conversation as they start getting going on the parking plan.
Is she gonna be meeting, or have a meeting with the Thompsonville residents, or especially any that, I was gonna say chamber, or the business people down there?
You know, I have to look into exactly what the details of the, of the proposal is, are going to be, but I think there will be at least one big public meeting, there's gonna be a kickoff, I'm not sure how, well, how that's going to be structured yet, Peter's really leading the charge on this one, so I'll try and get some feedback.
Okay.
Couple last things, a couple more things to report, we've got two businesses that are expanding, that don't, there's no commission action, because there's no change to the building, it's just a tenant change, one is at 76 Palumba, there's gonna be a new retail, there's already several retailers at that space, and they are going to be selling, I believe, fish and hobbies material.
Which...
I'm not sure which unit.
Is 76?
76 is the Smith...
Okay.
Smith Dairy.
Smith Dairy, location, yeah, so there's a few other retail, Tell Me A Story is another retail location in there.
Right.
So, it's just a transition to, of tenant.
Yep.
And then the other one is over at, it's 204B Elm Street, this is where 7-Eleven's located, there's the nail salon there, and they're actually going to be expanding into the other retail unit, so they're going to be growing their business into that space, and no, both of these, it's no exterior changes, no impact on parking, so just business growth.
Sounds nice to hear that people are expanding. That's very good, good news.
Yeah. Then, the last one that's a little more involved question is, St. Patrick's Church down in Thompsonville, they are going to be making a change to add an ADA compliance elevator. Past practices that ADA, all things related to ADA have gone through the building department with that sign-off from the zoning enforcement officer, and not come through the commission, because they're in Thompsonville, they are going to the revitalization committee, and it's, I think it's gonna be a great design, and wanted to just check in with everyone about that process, because typically revitalization makes their comments to the commission, and not directly to the zoning enforcement officer, but because this is an ADA project, an ADA...
But if it's a...
And it is a foot...
Construction, outside construction, not interior, it's really gotta come through here, I would thought, why is it, I don't know, I never heard that.
Yeah, so, but the thing is, so what we, what I've understood is that all of the ADA changes at a property have typically just gone through the building department, that if they come through, if a project comes through the commission, and then there's an ADA compliance thing, that that all happens with the building department and the zoning enforcement officer, and that they typically haven't come to the commission, we can bring them in, they're, they are prepared.
Revitalization, what, what are they, what...
They're looking for that exterior design review.
Well, see, if it's exterior, then that's...
Right, so that's...
We usually see anything that's exterior, because it's the facade, and, you know...
Well, the, that's, the design piece is gonna come through, we might, too.
The design eventually will be with us, too, I, I had never heard that, because most ADA material has been done inside.
Right.
Right, so, yeah, so that's why it's, it's a little bit of a unique situation, so we can have them come in, I, you know...
Yeah, true.
Yeah, I agree, yeah. If it's changing the outside structure, and the outside, and the exterior, and the facade, you know, and the materials, perhaps...
Depends on location, whether it's on the...
Yeah, I think, I mean, it's a very consistent design, I think it'll look really great, but you guys should have a chance to look, if that's...
Is there any urgency to get this done, I mean, is that a reason to not come before us, or...
I mean, they're looking to do it as soon as possible, but, we don't have a full application.
Keep it going with any of the other units, it's gonna take them a while, two weeks isn't gonna...
Yeah.
Well, we can't hear them on June 5, would be June 19, because we don't have a full application.
I'm sorry?
We don't have an application form in place yet, because we weren't sure what the process would be, because this is such a, typically, these things are, the ADA stuff happens because it's mandated by the building department, and ends up not coming back.
How long would it take for an application to be filled out?
Well, the, our requirements are that it's, everything has to be, it has to be submitted the day, 24 hours in advance of the meeting, to be accepted.
Having a...
So, we have some material, we don't have a formal application form.
Are you having a...
A R T.
A R T?
It didn't look like it needed to, we can have, we weren't, I hadn't planned on an A R T for them.
Wasn't the engineer, the engineer...
But the engineer should have, we'll do an A R T, I mean, the engineer would look at it anyway, and that's part of the building part...
Higher department, because in the fire inspect...
Right, and they would do that for a building anyway, so, but we'll have, we'll go through the whole process.
Yeah.
It's a unique, it's a unique case.
When is Revite seeing this?
They're gonna see them on the 20th, so the Revite will see them next week.
So, okay, so...
Why can't we use their, their application?
They don't have a formal application.
That is right.
I think we need more formality.
We're working, yeah, I mean, there's, it's a unique, it's a unique one, because typically, Revite looks at things that are coming through, they come through our office, and it's a formal application, and it's a...
Interior, interior ADA is entirely different.
Yeah, changing the footprint, too, and the whole thing?
Yeah, so we'll, we'll bring, we'll do the whole process.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, I think I just, when I was looking through the regulations, it's, it's a little hard to judge what the process for these things are.
If they're in such a rush, as I offered before, if I could get four together, we can have a, be a special meeting. It wouldn't take long.
But on our end, we need to get everything in line.
Together, and, you know, the permits, and, you know...
Well, I know, but if she gets it together before the date she gave us, that's up to you.
So, I mean, I can see, if you're willing to hear it on that night, on the 5th, because I think that, that is my, that is an option, I think, if you decide to hear something off of the list, but you'll see when we get through to the list, we've got a long list for the 5th.
Okay, all right, so, okay, we'll address that.
We'll do, yeah, but I'll have them, we'll get everything in, and...
All right, we'll schedule it at the end, okay.
Yes. And I think that's everything on my list, we've got a lot going on.
I have in the back of my head that you asked me something, and we were gonna ask the commission.
It might have been this one, it was the ADA, this ADA, because generally, there's sort of, our ADA statement says that you can go into the setbacks and things with ADA, but it doesn't, you know, we weren't sure about the process, because past practice has been a little bit different, and we haven't had that many cases where it's an exterior ADA change.
Oh, it'd be all interior, we don't care, I mean, we care, but we don't handle any of it. I know fire department checks elevators, and inspects them, and building department, and so forth, but...
Right, so that, I mean, that all happens in a, in a standard building permit process that...
Okay.
So, but we'll have, we'll go through the whole thing.
Okay.
All right.
That is...
Commissioner, please.
Public participation. At this point, the meeting, Planning and Zoning Commission welcomes comments, concerns, and opinions relating to planning and zoning in Enfield, from anyone who's present, provided no one may discuss any matter of business at this time that is already elsewhere on the agenda, any matter that's part of an open public hearing of the commission, or any matter where a decision of the commission may be pending, is there anyone would like to address the commission at this time? Anyone like to address the commission at this time? Last call to address the commission at this time. Hearing none, we'll go on, then to correspondence, you have Capitol Region's requests, looks like several of them are doing their plans of development, and you have the letter that Rachel referred to last time, from the town attorney, and the interpretation of the town's use of properties that they own. You have a Hot Topics in Land Use Law and Practice 2014, that's being held at Friday, the 13th of June, in Mark Twain Museum Center in Hartford.
This one could be really interesting, I think.
I went a couple years ago, and it was very interesting, we, I learned a heck of a lot, it's the state-of-the-art latest laws.
Right, and this one...
And then I brought that back, and, you know, and generated some discussions, it's well worth somebody going.
Yeah, I'm, I'm definitely going, I think Tracy's gonna also go, for sure, there's a, the big one here is this McKenzie case, the town attorney brought it to you all, I think, sometime in the fall, that there was a case down in Monroe, and what they looked at was, it has to do with waivers, when it comes to standard development applications, not subdivision waivers, but waivers of things like the setbacks, and whether or not you can grant that flexibility, or if they would, if, that has to be a decision of the ZBA, so there's some specifics there, so I'll be really curious to learn a lot more about it, and I think it could be a good one to attend, and for both planning and zoning, and for Zoning Board of Appeals members.
Yeah. Okay, moving on, you have an announcement from the Powder Hollow Brewery Pine Club, so he's already getting organized, sounds interesting, and I believe that's all that was in for correspondence, anything else that we have? Okay, moving on to commissioners' correspondence, I don't know if you all received it, but from Courtney, and she had a piece in the Business Times...
I think it was at the Hartford Business Journal, maybe?
Hartford Business Journal, concerning downtown Teaville, and the rail station, and other things that she's doing, which was an excellent article, and there were other webs, her own website for Enfield is, is very interesting, too, she's developed some very good websites for, for that. I wonder if she could produce something before the P and Z meeting that you could run?
To show the website?
No, well, either that, or just En, or Enfield itself.
Yeah, the Think, so the ThinkEnfield.com website was launched at the gala in November, was when it went live, and it's, you know, it's a clearinghouse of all the information, information for developers, and for doing business in the Development Services Department, so, you know, that includes information about permits and procedures, but also some really great retail, real estate listings for commercial sites and industrial sites throughout town.
Yeah, that's very good. Okay, moving on, new public hearing. Secretary, please read Public Hearing 2791, and take the roll. Now, we, this is both the same company, but two separate parcels, and it sounds to me that they're really different, so we'll do one at a time, we can't, we can't combine them, they're too diverse, okay?
All right. The Enfield Planning and Zoning Commission will have public hearings on Thursday, May 15, 2014, beginning at 7:00 p.m. in the Town Hall Council Chambers, 820 Enfield Street, Enfield, Connecticut, concerning the following. Public hearing 2791, special use permit to extend an existing concrete pad 10 feet by 12 feet, and to place a 10-foot by 42-foot environmental equipment container to house a dual-phase extraction DPE system to remediate soil and groundwater at 100 Elm Street in a business regional BR district, map 43, lot 15, Atia Group applicant, Alliance Energy LLC owner. This notice was published in the Journal Inquirer on May 3, 2014, and May 8, 2014. Roll call, Charles Durin.
Present.
Elizabeth Ballard.
Here.
Peter Falk, Kathleen, I'm here, Kathleen Sarnow.
Here.
Lori Longy, Nicholas Fakis, Charles Ladd, Ronald Gregory.
Here.
Alan Dryden.
Here.
Dominic Climo.
Mr. Dryden and Mr. Gregory will be sitting in for the absent commissioners. The applicant here, will you come forward and explain 2791, which I believe is the station on Elm Street?
Hi. Jesse Arroyo, I don't know if I need to state my address, I have done so before.
Yes, please, your name and address, right.
112 Green Street in Apple, Massachusetts.
Have the microphone face you, so it picks you up.
Sorry.
No, it's all right, I believe you are all right, but I don't know if you...
Matthew Berger, 187 Prospect Street in Ashland, Massachusetts.
We are looking to, as it says in the application, extend the existing concrete pad 12 feet by 10 feet, to, so that we can house a remediation trailer, so that we can address both groundwater and soil constituents that we've identified in the groundwater and soil. that we've identified in the groundwater and soil at the station related to historic operations of the property as a gasoline service station. They have operated previous remediation systems in the past. S V E system ran from, I believe, 1999 to approximately 2004, which initially was what the existing portion of the concrete pad would utilize for, to house that remediation trailer. It was only an S V E system, so it really only addressed the soil constituents itself. They then modified the system to an air sparge S V E system in approximately 2004 and ran it to approximately 2006. But because there's product in the groundwater, the application of that remedial technology wasn't determined to be a feasible alternative. So they discontinued the operation of that remedial technology in 2006. And since that point, we've conducted groundwater... Well, the previous consultants conducted groundwater monitoring, and we took over the project in approximately 2011. And we've developed this remedial strategy, which is dual-phase extraction, to depress the groundwater table and then allow the S V E portion of the dual-phase extraction system to then treat the soil constituents. There are pretty widespread impacts across the site. The previous concrete pad that existed was... Had gone through Z B A. We have the application itself, and it was approved to be part of a permanent structure for the life of the property. We are also looking to, in addition to extending the concrete pad to house our remediation trailer, to perform excavation activities to connect to some of the existing piping. We've done some testing on some of the existing piping and determined that some of it may be usable, but until we open up the ground and evaluate exactly the conditions of the existing piping, we may need to trench back the entire length. The monitoring wells are already existing and in place. We're just looking to try and excavate. And once we do the excavation activities, it'll have to be below the frost layer to four feet below grade. We'll have to bed it with pea stones, so some of that soils will have to also be removed, which is a secondary reason why we're here. We may be also exceeding the 600 cubic yard threshold limits that you guys have. So it's sort of a dual-purpose special use permit to both extend the concrete pad and also to allow for the removal of greater than 600 cubic yards. At this point in time, we can't give you a definitive amount until we get to that point, but we expect it to be greater than 200... 600 cubic yards. Since we also will need to trench and connect to the P O T W to allow for the discharge, we're working with the P O T W in the Connecticut Department of Energy and Environmental Protection to allow for the discharge of the treated groundwater into their system. We will also need to upgrade the electrical system because right now, the previous system was fed by a single-phase electrical unit, and now we're looking to upgrade to a three-phase electrical system. So there is quite extensive amounts of work to be done. We have been in front of Z B A before, and their main concern was that we're gonna put this structure, and it's gonna be permanent and for the life of the property. So they recommended after that, at that point in time, that we come in front of planning and zoning and utilize the special use permit instead to allow for us to operate it under a temporary process, instead of a permanent process. We are looking... We anticipate the lifespan of this treatment system to be approximately three years at this point in time, two years' worth of operation, and probably approximately about a year following that to monitor the groundwater conditions, to make sure that the conditions don't rebound and that we would have to restart the system.
Okay, then that takes care of a question I had, because one place it says three years, and on page 21 of exhibit seven, it says two. So you plan on using it two years, but the possibility, you might have to go three.
Correct. We're not just gonna discontinue its operation and remove it from the site. We're also looking to monitor the groundwater conditions and ensure that there is... It may not be in operation, but just to ensure that the groundwater conditions have depressed adequately and there's no rebound and allow us to potentially turn it back on, at which point, if we reach the three-year point, we would come back in front of you guys and request an extension to continue its operation and to extend the approval. We have been in front of A R T before and have discussed a lot of the issues with Rachel and thank Rachel very much for all of her assistance for both of these. So I probably won't say that again, or maybe I would. Because she has been very helpful in the process. We... So that's pretty much the extent of what we're trying to do at this particular site. There have been concerns raised, I believe, regarding the impervious surface. But on our... Looking at our calculations, it seems as though we will be creating a 12-by-10-foot pad, but it only affects less than 1% of the property. We do recognize it, but in effect, we're only looking to do this on a temporary basis for three years and then remove not only the 12-by-10-foot section that we've put in, but also the 30-by-10-foot section that already exists. So in effect, over the short term, we are increasing the impervious surface, but over the long term, we will be decreasing it. So I...
You had... So in other words, the existing pad, which is... Has been allowed as permanent, it will be... It will now be temporary with this action. It will become temporary.
It will.
The other question is, in the A R T, you mentioned regarding impervious surface and not wanting to remove parking spaces. That indicates that you were interested in alternative solutions. I wasn't sure what those alternative solutions might be.
Well, we're interested in alternative solutions. Some of the alternative solutions that I thought about was installing roof drains to discharge it, but wasn't necessarily sure if that... How that would be viewed by the commission. Aside from that, I'm interested in hearing about other alternatives, more so than providing them at this point in time. But again, don't necessarily feel that... I'm not trying to belittle the point, but it is less than 1% of the total area of the property. So it will be a limited area that is affected.
Other questions? I have several going through.
You talked about removing soil and therefore the 600 cubic feet limit, but you're replacing that with trap rock or something?
We'll be replacing that area. When we install our piping system... Our piping, we'll bed it in pea stone to be protective of it. It won't just be whatever's in the ground right now, which may have a large amount of debris, rocks that could potentially puncture the PVC that we install into the ground. So we'll bed it in pea stone, and when we displace that soils from the ground and put the pea stone in the ground, we'll have to transport those soils off-site.
And then I would imagine you put some tarp or something over the stone, put dirt on that and grow grass?
Correct, correct.
You wouldn't even notice.
It won't be grass, because it'll... It will be throughout the paved area of the parking lot.
It'll be under the paved area.
There, yes. And like I said, there is already... And I think one of the figures that you guys had in your packet shows the... That there are existing trenches in the ground from the two previous operations of the system. So we're trying to do as minimal excavation as possible, and we've placed our existing recovery wells and S V E wells in locations which would limit the amount that we do need to trench.
I assume that the D E P is requiring you to do all this?
Uh, it's... They're requiring us to remediate the soil and groundwater. They don't dictate necessarily the remedial strategies that we utilize.
As long as it's...
But as long as we achieve their... The goal of getting to cleanup stage. That... The rap report that we've provided in... With our application is a draft of what's actually gonna go to the department. We will send that... What's that?
Answer me.
We will send that to the department, and it'll... It will be part of our remedial action plan.
Thank you.
Several questions. From what you said, then presently, what's there is not operating and hasn't since 2006?
The... Even the enclosure is gone at this point in time. It's just the concrete pad. It has the former fencing that surrounds it at this point in time, but it is fairly old and worn. When we install our system, we'll install a chain-link fence around it to be protective so that nobody enters it. It'll have signs on it. It'll be protected from the public so that nobody can enter this area.
And prior, you said just they had a Z B A? All I saw in here was that they'd had a building permit, but they hadn't had P and Z approval prior.
Not that... Not that we found in the records.
I don't remember.
It was in 1994 that it was signed off on for that system, and we found the building permit, but...
Okay, now...
No record.
I have that.
Yeah.
Eventually Ginny found that information for me, and we have the actual... It's not a formal permit. It's just something written in another piece... Another document.
I was just wondering how it happened to go that direction, but that's passed.
You talk about the building permit. That is something that, following approval regarding this, we will get the building permit for that process. But I believe that when trying to get the building permit, they've always directed us that we need to follow this.
You're wastewater... You're pumping the water, and it's filtered and all this, and then you're discharging it into what? The sanitary sewers?
Yes.
Okay. Because it mentioned something about... In there, it mentioned something about the storm sewers.
It is the P O T W system that we will be discharging it to.
Can you say what?
The sanitary sewer, not the storm sewer.
Can you explain P O T W, just for...
Public-operated treatment?
Publicly owned.
Okay. So that'd be our water pollution controls, sanitary sewers?
That's correct. And I believe the gentleman was there when we had the...
Yeah, he was. And you... I guess you have to meet certain requirements of his. I don't know if they're in the... If they're in the conditions or not. But they should be, because I know a couple of others that we've worked on permits years ago. They did want information on what's being pumped out.
We do have that information.
Now, you're talking about a trailer on this. Now, you do mention that you could not use a trailer, but I imagine it makes it a lot easier to use a trailer.
The trailer system that's in place that... Well, that we're proposing to use on this holds a lot of the major components that we do need. We could, in effect, make the treatment system shorter... Smaller, but at the same time, that would reduce the effectiveness and the capacities of the components and make the treatment process that much longer.
Well, I understand that, and the reason I'm asking, it's in such a key location. It's in front of the mall, perhaps one of our busiest streets. I just would not want, let's say, a derelict trailer in there. And I would have in the conditions that it has no identification on it either or advertising of any type.
It will... No advertising, but it will have emergency contact information from...
That's okay. Yeah, I understand that part.
If there's any problems or issues with it.
I just wouldn't want to see, let's say, Old Dominion on the side or something, and then advertising some truck firm or some other leasing company or whatever else.
This is something to clarify. Will there be wheels under this, or will there be no wheels?
There won't be wheels under it.
Okay.
No wheels?
It will be directly placed on the concrete pad.
Oh, so you... Oh, all right, so...
It's a container more than the...
It's a container.
We do have photos of it, if you would like to see what the photos look like.
That would be fine. Yep.
I'm not sure.
That would help. That would save me a question.
It's a container.
Yeah, no problem. And it's on the ground, so the height isn't really gonna be a problem either.
The two bonds, the site improvement bond and the erosion and sediment control bond.
Excuse me.
Oh, sorry.
We're still... The question on the top bars, is that... Is there a reason for that?
That portion can be dismantled and dislodged. It's just to access the top, but there'll be a fence.
Is there a hatchway up there or something?
I believe there is to allow for... Because the... What the... On that portion of the trailer is the liquid phase carbon units and the vapor phase carbon units. When we're removing the liquids from the groundwater, they'll first go through an air stripper tray, which is pretty much just allow its trays with holes.
So you gotta work from the top, and... Okay, so that's a safety... Okay.
And it'll allow for us to evacuate the carbon units and to remove and replace the carbon once it becomes used up and spent over time.
Now, in there, talks of the trailer being 10 feet by 42 feet wide, length 10 feet wide, 42 feet. Length, anything on the height?
I think it's eight feet high, I believe. Don't quote me on that, but I'm pretty sure it's eight feet.
Our maximum is 12. For accessory... Anything accessory structures is 12.
So...
Higher than 12 feet.
So it's higher than 12 feet?
Well, with those bars, it might be, but the trailer itself doesn't look higher than 12 feet.
The trailer itself is not higher than 12 feet.
So can we give a waiver on that if we need one? Check that while we have a few other questions.
Well, that's getting back to this... That McKenzie case, actually.
Okay.
Let me read through it.
Now, how about the maintenance of the trailer? How often do you come and check things? Is that...
Well, we will monitor it per the general discharge permits from the state. And initially, it's a lot more frequent. They require us to ensure that the discharge that we're putting into the P O T W system doesn't exceed certain limits. So they require us to be out there, and I believe it's day... Startup, day two... Well, day 1, 3, 5, 7, 14, 21, 28. But after that, we propose to go out there monthly. Depending on the amount of potential iron fouling, we may have to go out there more frequently to change the bag filters. So it may be semi-annually, but right now, we're saying monthly we'll be out there to perform.
Okay. It mentions that you have a safety automatic dialing system and a generator. Now, how far away is the response?
How... The response is...
Let's say the automatic dialer goes off and goes to where Boston or wherever.
What it does is it'll cycle through, and it'll call four or five different people in order of importance. So it'll probably call me first. If I don't answer the phone, it'll call the next person in the line. Living in Athol, I'm quite far away, but we do have subcontractors that are in the vicinity. Our nearest subcontractor is... Well, we have another office in Farmington as well, which isn't that far away, and we have... Our subcontractors are in the vicinity of this area as well. So the response time wouldn't be that long. But it...
Could you give us like...
It'll notify us that there is a problem, but there are failsafes and shut-off switches that it says that if it reaches certain limits, the system will shut down altogether. It'll also notify me that it's shut down.
Oh, okay.
So it... The purpose of the telemetry system is to put all those failsafes in place. So the notification process is just as a warning system to us that the system is shut down for some reason or another. So it's not telling us, hey, look, you need to do something about this. Go out there right away. We're just gonna continue to operate while you're on... While you're in transport.
Right. Okay. Now, we've had a problem before. I know the waste disposal. Where do you store it, or how long do you leave it on the property? And how do you store it?
I'm not sure of what you mean. Waste disposal for the water or waste disposal?
Well, I know you're disposing the waste into the sewer system.
Correct.
But, well, whatever you extract, where does that go? But, uh, whatever you extract, where does that go?
The groundwater that we extracted, it runs through the system to be treated and then it will connect to the, to the, the sanitary sewer at the site.
But yeah, but is there anything that you're extracting?
The media that you're using to filter, you have to clean it or throw it away once in a while. That's what he's asking.
Absolutely. Yes. Those carbon units. We have carbon units that are located inside of the trailer and we plan to monitor both the influence of the system and there are mid fluent points where we'll also monitor for breakthrough of the carbon units to ensure that they're, they're working properly. And in the event that there is breakthrough of the carbon units, we'll go out there and that's what that, that, the, the railings are at the top to allow for them.
What do you do with anything that has to be disposed? You're extracting something from the water.
They'll be, it'll be transported to a treatment facility. The.
How often?
Depending on the, the results of the monitoring. So we don't know, we don't have a definitive schedule about how often it'll.
Why I'm getting at is because, uh, and maybe we'll get into it the next time, but over on, uh, off Hazard Avenue, you had, they were running extraction and they ended up storing it in some barrels outside. And I just don't want to see that this would happen in this particular place.
Um, it, it would be a, a, a day-long process that, well, not a day long, but it would, it would be conducted in the course of one day.
ZBA got after it.
Where the carbon would be extracted from the unit and fresh carbon would, would be put into the unit at the same time.
But you're extracting vapors in and vapors are dispersed into the air?
Vapors are dispersed into the atmosphere.
And there's no other material that's being extracted? You were talking about iron.
Uh, well, iron will, there will be the bag filters themselves that will prevent the iron, uh, filter the iron from, from the air stripper and from, from fouling up the carbon.
There's no other waste product except vapors?
Other, the, except for the carbon, the, the vapors and the, the bag filters. Those, those three media.
Do you store them on property?
We will not store them on the property.
Maybe that'll be a condition. No materials.
So that when your materials are, what I'm thinking is maybe when the materials are extracted that they leave the site immediately? Is that sort of?
Well, I, it, I, I don't know because all I know is that they had a problem and it may not be this company. It could be this company over on, I have the numbers, over on Hazard Avenue.
Smith's Plaza.
The other mobile station.
The Smith's Plaza. Yeah, it's the other mobile station. And they had them all stored out back and I, uh, ZBA had a, a thing about them because they were just out there.
Right.
So you use carbon in any bags with the material you've extracted will be taken from inside the trailer and directly off, off-site. Nothing will be stored.
That is correct.
For later transport off-site.
That is correct.
Can you, can you tell us if you know how far the bloom is over there?
How far the what?
The bloom extends over there. I saw that you had some of your wells out into the parking lot of the mall.
We have some of the monitoring wells on the target property and they have not, the, the plume has not extended onto the target property. Well, it has, but it, it's, our downgrade in extent, I can't remember exactly which identifiers. That is, that is correct. And we propose to address the, the, the large scale impacts that are, reside on the site. What's off the site is very low level impacts that's off the site right now.
And I, I see that some of it contains lead, which you really aren't using at present too.
Uh, in the groundwater and in the soil?
Well, yeah.
It, it's a historic release. So there was leaded tanks out there and it's, it's indicative that, that this release has, it was an older release.
Yep. Yep. Okay. Uh, now soil disposal that, that Peter asked you about, where, where does that go or how long does that stay on-site?
Uh, the, the soil disposal will, we will have to test the soil to ensure that it's, it can go to a treatment facility. It'll go to probably either, well, based on where we're located now, Ted Andricks is a facility that's located in Chickapie, Massachusetts. Uh, and that they incinerate the soils or, or maybe use it for asphalt batching. I'm not sure which purpose they will use it for, but we'll have to collect the sample prior to performing the activities to ensure that it's meeting their limits at the disposal facility. And as we remove it from the ground, we will, we will put it in a, in a triaxle or some sort of truck to be disposed of and brought to the facility as it's extracted from the ground.
So it's not being left on the property to be extracted and taken out? Okay. Uh, we have, uh, let's see, engineering had a question about impervious surf, surface now, and which he mentioned.
Right. That's, that's the 1% increase with the expansion of the pad. And his recommendation is that there should be an offset, moving 120 square feet of impervious surface somewhere else on the site.
Do we have that? Or he, he, he's mentioned before that he wouldn't like to have to do that. So you're talking 1%. Have you got that covered in your, your, uh, bill, the permits?
Uh, the.
On your conditions, do you have that, on the conditions about engineering?
I do. It's number five. Um, so the question is, is, is should it be removed? I mean, I think that's, that is to the commission to make a final determination that the temporary thing as was described versus removing that, that amount of pavement.
So if we.
It will be making the site more non-conforming.
If the commission decides to, that it's temporary and to let it go, then, uh, we would strike this out?
Yes. I think that's, unless, if that's the only concern.
We would remove that then? Okay. So that's something we have to talk about. The fire department had no concerns. I'm taking that off of ART meeting, but has there been anything since?
Uh, no other concerns.
Water pollution says, uh, they wanted permits and plans at the ART, but then there was some letter I read in here that he really didn't have comments or something.
Yeah, this one we, um.
So what do we do on water pollution? I, I would think there'd have to be a letter in there. Do you cover that? On your conditions? I, I didn't see it.
I don't think so. I think that we could replace that. It might be, I think it would be a condition prior to issuance of permit.
So we could put number five, rewrite that to, uh, WPC?
Would you want that before Peter signs the plans or, or before permits are issued?
Probably before Peter signs it. So I, wherever that would go.
So that would be, that would be a good one. Number five would be the, rather than it being town engineering, that it would be water pollution control?
Yeah. If that's where it would fit.
Yeah.
Then that wouldn't be anything dealing with the date either.
Right.
We'll have to rewrite that for whoever makes the motion. Uh, then wetlands also had no concerns. So this needs a waiver. Uh, can we, and I think you mentioned in here, coming back, uh, could we have them submit something to you of, of the report or, or to the, the commission? It wouldn't take long.
So what we put in, in this one is that the general conditions were, um, that an annual progress report be, be issued to the planning department at the same, at this same date if the commission decides tonight or if it's, it's tabled to whatever that date is. So one year out each, each year, that there should be a progress report of how the site's progressing. Is it working? Is, are things going well? And then, um, that it would be valid just for that three-year period.
That's number 19.
Right. So that's number 19, that there would be an annual progress update, um, issued to the planning department that we would then report to the commission. Uh, we could say that goes directly to the commission that they would come back. That's up to the commission to determine.
So I don't come back or just a report?
It could be a report that we put into the packet.
Yeah. Okay.
So maybe it's annual written progress reports issued to the commission? Would that clarify that for, for future?
Yeah, it should be a yearly report or if they make a report. Now, for item, I had item 21. Uh, can you bond for that removal?
Um, yes, I can see that the bond shall cover.
Because I know we bond for certain other removals that aren't.
Removal?
Well, a lot of it is taken, the bond covers the removal. I know bond performance we did.
The site, this would be the site restoration bond, I think, probably.
Restoration bond, right. So I don't see that that's in there. A site restoration bond shall be posted. I know you have bonding.
Two, one for site improvements and one for erosion and sediment control. Well, that was my question. Would either of those bonds apply to removal of the pad?
No.
If not, then we need a separate one.
Site restoration.
Right. So maybe nine and 10 should be, if, if the commission likes that we could, would amend nine and 10 to say inclusive of removal of the, of that full pad?
Well, before we have required site restoration bond, so I don't know how you.
Right. And so the way it's written is that it shall be determined by the town engineer. So if we like it to, to be a requirement in addition to whatever the town engineer states.
Well, you said a separate bond for erosion and sediment control and it should say site restoration.
Right. Uh,
The towns, and, and an amount to be determined by the town engineer.
You actually have three bonds here, including landscaping. So I guess the question is should there be a fourth bond? Or do you?
I think site improvements and site restoration, maybe the wording there is.
Well, it's a bond for site improvements and a site for erosion and cement, sediment control and also one for site restoration. Yeah, you want three bonds.
And then landscaping is number 11. So there'll be total of four.
Mm-hmm.
Bonds.
Oh, so you want to add a, so it'd be 13 conditions in you're doing?
If it's a separate bond, it should be, yeah.
Yeah, okay. So 12 would, a new number 12 would be site restoration bond.
And it would be the same wording, but it would say site restoration.
Right. And the, the 12 becomes 13.
Yes.
Okay.
And I put landscaping, landscaping, it doesn't, there's no landscaping proposed. Would we want to replace the landscaping with the?
Well, when they remove the, uh.
There would be land.
That would be your landscaping bond, cause they're gonna have to landscape that section.
The, the landscape bond would cover the grass for.
Yes, it does. It'd cover the grass and whatever else. The police department hasn't gotten in on this, but there's an exit there to, to the, yeah, I kept my directions wrong. East side, the southeast side that goes out onto the entrance. Will this block their vision or is it too, is it up?
It, there is still approximately, I believe it's about 15 feet. So there, there's, there is some space. It's not right at the corner to, so that people can't see.
Even with the increase?
That's correct.
Would you like the traffic and safety officer to do a letter before Peter signs?
Well, maybe it should be checked out for vision. I, you know, I don't know if that, that, that exit is signed properly anyway. I, I don't go out that way, but a lot of times you see people taking a left turn out of that and you're coming head on into the in-traffic.
Oh, it says exit only on, on the sign from the station itself, but it's a small little sign and it's not, it's not that well done.
Well, I, I don't know. I, I've caught him coming out at me.
There's no left turn further up too by, by, uh, and by friendlies there and sometimes every now and then, all right, somebody will just stay in that left hand lane and then they could cut across the other traffic.
Vision was just a, a thing with this, with the added to it. I don't know if you do that. Okay, so it, I guess that takes care of it all. All I have. Do you have any problems with any of the conditions or any of the ones that we added?
Um, not that I can identify right now. So, no, these, these are the, your standard conditions, I'm assuming. They are, or are these?
Some we tailor make to, to yours. For example, having, uh, we don't always have all departments check it out, but, uh, we do the traffic safety officer, although it's on private property, he at least gives us advice or could give you, I don't know. I don't know if there is a sign. I've never gone out that road. All I know is they come at me sometimes. Uh, and I don't know if there is a no left turn on that back.
It just says not an exit or this is, this, uh, no exit or something to that effect. It doesn't say no left turn. It just says not an exit.
Oh, well, all right. It's, okay, I, I don't know. Uh, any other questions for, and while we're doing that? So you have no personal questions?
Can I just confirm the list of conditions while we're talking about them?
Let's do it right.
Um, the one, this is still up for discussion amongst yourselves that I have. So I have seven conditions under, conditions to be met prior to signing. Uh, number five was changed from the engineering to the water pollution control. And that's a memo to the file shall be submitted by water pollution control, verifying that any and all concerns have been addressed in the revised reference plans.
Right. Thank you. That's good.
And then that number six would be, uh, related to traffic safety. Uh, would read a memo to the file shall be submitted by the traffic safety officer, verifying that any, all, any and all concerns have been addressed in the revised reference plans. Seven would be the last one.
Specifically about site, back, uh, in the west, no, east.
Related to?
Southeast exit that goes on to the entrance.
Uh, so, so it'd be, um, memo to the file shall be submitted by traffic safety officer, verifying that any and all concerns specifically related to turning movement.
Well, uh.
Specifically related to turning movements have been addressed in the revised reference plans. And that gives him access to the, in case he has questions on the turning motion.
But it's specifically, I don't care about the, well, the rest is all right, but specifically in back of this pad is an exit onto the entrance ramp into the mall. And all I'm saying with the addition there is the vision, like they, if they're gonna come out that exit, they should look to the left.
Right.
And see if a car is coming. I, I don't want this obstructing them. That's what I'm concerned about.
Okay. So specifically related to turning movements onto the entrance drive to 90 Street, which is the address of the mall.
Fine.
I'm confused over, is this just a concern or you want, are we obligated to put up signs and, and saying no left turn?
So what it is, is that the traffic safety.
That would be nice, but we can't tell you to do it. It's on private property right now and, and it probably should be signed. Maybe he could ask you to do it. I don't know. Because I know they took stop signs down and, and we asked to have them up and then I guess they weren't on the plans according to, to Jose at the time. So you get interesting car movements there. But there used to be a stop sign at the end of the entrance. You stopped before you came on to the, the mall property.
But you don't anymore.
But you don't anymore. So I, I don't know the legals in and out of the signs. If it, if you were in here for, for something new, it probably could ask you to put up signs, but I would think, I, I don't know. People should be, know that it's a entrance right, the right, but it should be, you know, left turn.
So just to explain the requirement, the requirement is that the, that the traffic safety officer review the proposal and that they submit a letter, um, to the file before the, the plans get signed off on by the commission secretary.
He might suggest it and then that's up to you.
You would discuss with him.
I guess. I don't know. It'd be, I don't know if there's a sign there or not. It's just my concern because of the vision of this size of the.
Traffic safety will look at it, right?
The traffic safety will look at it, that's all. Because I don't know how far this will be back. It's what, additional footage?
It's additional 12 feet.
So it's additional 12 feet, which moves it 12 feet closer to that exit ramp.
Okay.
And that's it? Okay. Uh.
Then on the next section, conditions to be met prior to issuance of permits, I now have, um, what will be eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, and 14. Um, so. So eight starts with this approval will become, nine, four sets of plans, 10 is the applicant shall post bond for site improvements, 11, bond for erosion and sediment control, 12 is the site restoration, 13 landscaping, 14 is if needed, pre-construction meeting.
Okay.
Then, starting with 15 would be, um, before certificate of compliance, same with 16. General conditions would then begin with number 17, so 17, 18, 19, 20, 21, 22, 23, 24. And then I got in the conversation two additional that I wanted to verify, and that was that 25 would read, no advertising shall be allowed on the container.
I'm sorry?
No advertising shall be allowed on the container. And then number 26, all waste and extracted material shall remain inside the storage container until removed from the site.
Well, I'd rather have them not stored there, period, but, what?
Shall be rem.
Removed, period, not stored.
Let's not store, no.
No storage on the property, except materials that they're going to use, new materials.
So change that to no, no waste extracted, and no waste or extracted material.
On the front, stored.
Stored on the property.
Be stored. Did I capture what everyone was looking to discuss?
Now, again, see, this is, makes a difference because they, they get the same thing. This has, all with, all our additions and changes should be in the next minutes.
Right, but then in the minutes, so yeah, so I'm going to make that change in our minutes generally, so we'll have that in their, in their instructions.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. You have no problems with it then? Alrighty. We just did signage on the place too, that's, that's interesting.
So, public hearing or?
Yeah, it's any, I'll open it to the public. Anyone in the public would like to speak in favor or against this application? Anyone in the public would like to speak in favor or against the application? Last call to speak in favor or against the application. Any reason to keep it open? Then you have all the information we need. You're all set? Okay, then I'll, I'll close, public hearing 2791. Cheryl, entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion.
So if you could actually, um.
Do a waiver first. Yeah, that's what he's going to do.
So there's a waiver, there's the waiver app one, and then the second should be that you use the, if you can, use the public notice. The language that was copied into the memo is ever so slightly off. It uses the word trailer instead of container.
Yeah.
So read what Peter did, that's what was appeared in the paper.
Make a motion to waive the full submission requirements of section 9.10.2 because the commission finds that the information is not necessarily, in order to decide on the application's conformance with these regulations.
Second.
Motion's made in second, and this is for the waiver. Any discussion? Hearing now, if you're ready to vote, take the roll.
Charles Durin.
Four.
Elizabeth Ballard.
Four.
Peter Falk, four. Kathleen Sarno.
Four.
Val Gregory.
Four.
Alan Drynan.
Four.
I'll make a motion to approve public hearing 2791, special use permit to extend an existing concrete pad 10 feet by 12 feet and to place a 10-foot by 42-foot container.
It's a environmental equipment container.
Environmental equipment container for the purposes of conducting remediation at 100 Elm Street in a business regional BR district, map 43, lot 15, and TIA Group applicant, Alliance Energy LLC owner, subject to the 26 conditions in a memo from Rachel Blatt dated May 9th, 2014. Those 26 conditions with the added ones as recorded by Rachel Blatt.
Second.
Motion's made in second.
Should we get in the verbal record what those changes are?
Yes, in the verbal record.
So those changes are. With, uh, there's going to be a full renumbering, um, under conditions to be met prior to signing of plans. Condition number five shall read, a memo to the file shall be submitted by the water pollution control, verifying that any and all concerns have been addressed in the revised reference plans. Number six will read, a memo to the file shall be submitted by the traffic safety officer, verifying that any and all concerns specifically related to turning movements onto the entrance drive to 90 Elm Street have been addressed in the revised reference plans. Number, number seven would start with, the conditions of approval shall be.
That one again, please, the, the, the turning thing.
Oh. A memo to the file shall be submitted by the traffic safety officer verifying that any and all concerns specifically related to turning movements onto the entrance drive to 90 Elm Street have been addressed in the revised reference plans. The entrance drive being.
Okay, I was just going to say, the south, maybe, all right, I, I just thought southwest would be, all right, you think it covers it?
Yeah.
All right, because there isn't any.
There's multiple, you're right.
It's entrance to the entire property.
Turning.
Okay.
What was that? Can you read it? Just the end of it.
Yeah, it's the, the entrance driveway, the entrance drive to 90 Elm Street, but there are actually, that's true, because the other, the other one enters into the property.
Entrance drives, period, and not, not specifically say which one, so meaning.
A bit generic.
Yeah.
Leave it up to the discretion of the traffic safety officer.
Entry, exit, but whatever.
Yeah. It can even just be two turning movements, specifically related to turning movements, and that way.
Right, just all turning movements, right.
He's looking at all of the entrances.
Yeah, yes.
Yeah, all right, okay.
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 I'm just concerned about its length and, all right.
So to keep that short, number six is, a memo to the file shall be submitted by the traffic safety officer verifying that any and all concerns specifically related to turning movements have been addressed in the revised reference plans. Number seven begins the conditions of this approval. Conditions to be met prior to the issuance of permits are renumbered eight through 14 with an added number 12. The applicant shall post a separate, shall post a site restoration, shall post a bond for site restoration in an amount to be determined by the engineer, town engineer with, and with surety acceptable to the town attorney. Conditions which shall be met, which must be met prior to the issuance of a certificate of compliance are renumbered number 15 through 16. General conditions are renumbered 17 through 24 with a few changes. Number 21 will read, annual, annual written progress reports shall be issued to the planning and zoning commission by May 15th of each year until remediation is complete. And then there are two added conditions to that list. Number 25, no advertising shall be allowed on the container. And 26, no waste or extracted material shall be stored on the property.
I don't want to put a hindrance on them. Do they, do you make a report to the state, you said?
Uh, we do, but.
How often? Maybe instead of, uh, they, they do the same report and send it to us. I, I hate to have them do double work.
Take out the year?
I don't know. How often do you do your report to state?
Uh, we will speak, once the system starts, it'll be on an annual basis.
So annual reports and just take out the date?
Well, annual report, uh.
Send us a copy of.
The copy of the state report.
Copy of, yeah.
Copy of us on the state, annual, the state, the annual state report to copy us.
How, how big is that?
Uh.
How many pages?
The text portion isn't that big, but laboratory analytical report, which are included, will be, will make it larger.
We don't need that, just the text portion.
No, no.
We don't need the lab, lab reports, just the text cover.
I know, because I looked at those reports of the, the last one, and they're interesting, but.
But that would take care of 22, to condition 21.
And then they don't have to make an extra report.
Yes.
Yeah.
One more question. Do they have to come back for aquifer because it's on an aquifer? Or do we have to have a special meeting? I, that's just a question. I don't want to throw a curve at them.
This, so the whole point of this one is that they will actually be resolving some of the aquifer protection issues, and I.
But it's construction in, in.
It is construction on the aquifer, and, but is it on the aquifer? I don't believe this one is. I think the other one is.
This one, this one's not on the aquifer.
It, it mentioned it, and that's why I picked it out. I didn't think it was, and I don't have my maps.
I have, actually, I've got my map.
Page nine of exhibit seven says one aquifer at the site.
No, this, this is the, the aquifer is actually the other property.
The next one.
Yeah.
No, no, I know it is on that one, but exhibit seven, it states, it's something they gave us. Let me find it.
Cheryl, I've got our map to you if that helps.
Where seven is. 10, 9.
Exhibit seven, page, what'd they say? Seven. That's the remedial action plan. And I didn't think it was, but maybe it's on the edge.
Yeah, I think, I think the, it's the 76 Hazard is on the edge.
As far as this map, it doesn't show it on here. I'll send it over to Charlie.
Okay.
That's the aquifer.
Okay, so that's the map, okay.
So I'll amend my motion to include the narrative from Rachel indicating the added terms and conditions.
It says, uh, the seasonal water table and groundwater was consistent in shallow, deep, and deeper screened wells indicating that there is only one aquifer at the site. There is no striking difference between the lithology of the shallow and deeper soils as observed in the well logs. Appendix C, but it mentions an aquifer, and I.
So our map, our map is the level A aquifers, which are the ones that I understand that aquifer protection deals with.
No, I know, but this doesn't say it's level C, it's appendix C that they've added, and, and this is.
We're just considering any water to be the part, part of an aquifer. There's no confining layers, there's, there's no, there's no breaks in the aquifer at all.
That's a question, that, that, okay.
Okay.
Yep, fine. All right, so we've got all those down now. Everybody happy with the conditions?
Was there a second?
Hang on, hang on.
Second. Okay, motion's made in second. Any discussion?
I just want to confirm that that last change was that the narrative portion of the annual state progress report shall be issued to the planning and zoning commission each year, no date there, until remediation is complete.
Whenever they submit it, then it comes to us. And somebody's got to follow that through, I guess, if we don't get one, how do we know?
Second.
All right, so we're all set.
I think that was the third second.
It's, it's good to see that, that you're doing this. I didn't realize that that was, it had been shut down. Thank you for the learning lesson too, on, on your procedures.
No problem. Call or all pull.
Charles Durin.
Four.
Elizabeth Ballard.
Four.
Peter Falk, four. Kathleen Sarno.
Four.
Val Gregory.
Four.
Alan Drynan.
Four.
Okay, now, public hearing 2792. So read the legal notice and take the roll.
Uh, the Enfield Planning and Zoning Commission will hold public hearings.
I don't know.
Swapping out my, my partner.
You're swapping out?
Enfield Planning and Zoning Commission will hold public hearings on Thursday, May 15th, beginning at 7:00 PM in the Town Hall Council Chambers, 820 Enfield Street, Enfield, Connecticut, concerning the following. Public hearing 2792, special use permit to perform excavation of soil in excess of 600 cubic yards and treat residual contamination in soil and groundwater at 76 Hazard Avenue in a business local BL district, map 56, lot 16, Antea Group applicant, Alliance Energy LLC owner. This notice was published in the journal Inquirer, uh, May 3rd, 2014, and May 8th, 2014. I will call Charles Durin.
Here.
Elizabeth Ballard. Peter Falk, here. Kathleen Sarno.
Here.
Lori Longi, Nicholas Sefakis, Charles Ladd, Val Gregory.
Here.
Alan Drynan.
Here.
Dominic Clamome.
Mr. Drynan and Mr. Gregory will be sitting in for the absent commissioners. Again, if you would please, for the record, identify yourselves and names and addresses.
My name is Jesse Arroyo, and I live at 112 Green Street in Othall, Massachusetts.
Tara Bosch, 7 Puyott Street in Milford, Mass.
Okay.
So for the property at 76 Hazard Avenue, the property owner, Alliance Energy, will be removing their UST system. All the tanks at the, at the site will be removed, and at this point in time, undetermined whether they will be replaced at this point. So in conjunction with that activity, Antea Group would like to perform excavation activities to remove residual contaminants in the, in the soil and groundwater at the site. So we've gone in front of inland wetlands already and gotten approval as of May 6th to perform those activities. The, the inland wetlands approved both portions of the, of the activities from Alliance performing the UST excavation, the UST removal activities, and Antea performing the excavation activities. We are in front of you now only to represent Antea Group as we would like to remove greater than the 600 cubic yards of soil in association with our excavation activities. We are, in the process, we are trying to de-water and we'll have a frac tank on-site that will allow us to lower the water table so that it's not as saturated as it could be when we remove the soils because water is obviously very shallow out there. It's about three feet below grade. So we, we plan on depressing the water table, putting that water into a frac tank on-site, treating the water, and also discharging it to the same POTW under a general discharge permit as we were talking about with the other site as well. We also proposing to, we're going to try to, we have our disposal samples now to take to the disposal facility, but based on the saturation level, we may not be able to transport and what we call live load the soils and remove them and take them immediately to the disposal facility. We may need to allow them to drain sufficiently, and we'll be protective of the wetlands as we discussed with the inland wetlands commission as well while we do this. We already have a, a firm handle on our excavation areas based on soil and groundwater sampling conducted in the past, but as we, as we perform the excavation activities, we'll use a, a, a piece of equipment to detect petroleum hydrocarbons in the soil and use that to segregate our soils and determine what is, is usable and what is, needs to be disposed of from the site. I'm not sure how much technical information you need regarding that piece of equipment, but it's, it's, it'll, it'll help us use a preliminary indicator of what's usable and what's not. Once we fi, finish the excavation area, we will then backfill it in lifts, and then at that point in time, since there's no proposed activity for the, for the property right now, we probably will not replace the asphalt at this point in time. It will probably just be gravel at the, at the surface, as we don't know what the property usage will be in the future. The whole area will be fenced off and, and protected so that nobody will be able to enter the property as we're performing our activities, and there will be hay bales and silt fences as we discussed with inland wetlands to be protective of the wetland area. One item that also is, was brought to the attention at the inland wetland meeting is the aquifer protection. This is the one that resides a portion of it within the aquifer protection. Ginny, Ginny had, I'm sorry, Virginia Higley.
That's fine, Teddy, it's Ginny.
Had submitted that inter-office memo to be included in this portion of the meeting as well, which we're hoping also gets approved as part of this. We do not plan to, to dig in the area of the aquifer protection. It abuts the. It abuts the, it encompasses a portion of the site, but it's at the other side of the property where we're proposing to dig.
So, okay, so that's why it's, we didn't have a meeting then? That's why I read Ginny's memo or that we would be told, but I didn't see anything on it? How, how far, they aren't working in the aquifer protection?
Um, no, there would not be any work in the aquifer protection area, in that particular portion of the, that portion of the site. And I think that it was that we needed a little more time to review if, if it needed to go forward to aquifer protection, that we make it a condition of approval.
I called you, but I didn't.
I'm sorry, I haven't, I didn't see my desk basically all day.
No, it's all right. I keep saying you need help up there, but that's all right. So if they're not working on it, then we really... I don't know, the, the area's been delineated anyway.
It could be done as a condition before, before issuance of permits, that a determination be made and that it be proposed, and I'm...
Because I hate, again, to hold them up, if we could, you know.
Well, I, I was assuming within conversations with, with Ginny that...
Well, she's the one that would notify us, yeah.
That it's not in the aquifer protection. She acknowledges that in her memo, but just wanted the Planning and Zoning Commission to, to provide their blessing, I guess.
Do we have a copy of that memo?
I, I didn't see that. I just saw...
Exhibit thirteen.
It's in her, in her wetlands memo.
Thirteen? Just to get the start. We've got five. I got the big place. There is a lot of paper, right? A lot of trees. Twelve.
To assume that the mobile gas station is going to be closed?
As of right now, it, it will be closed. What, what the outcome of that property is, whether it's being sold, whether it's being, we do not know at this point in time.
And how does that deal with the tanks that are in the ground?
Uh, well, when, they're, they're removing their tanks as they're ceasing operation of it. So if a new owner would come into play, they would then put their own tanks in and, and go through the process and, and need to go through the same process as we're going through the, as we remove them.
So you're removing is somewhere around the tanks?
What's that? Yes, yes, absolutely. The soil that we're removing, there's an excavation plan in the, in the remedial action plan that we submitted as a...
Made aware of the...
As an attachment to the, to the application, which shows an approximate area of excavation. It's, it's not an exact science. We, we, there may be more, there may be less soils that will, are removed from the process, but it will, in total, likely be greater than the six hundred cubic yards.
And the soil that you remove will create a hole, and you're planning on putting in as much back as you took out? So that the ground is still level?
No, we're going to put, we're going to put clean backfill material back in. It won't be the same stuff. We're going to put different stuff in.
It's going to come up to grade.
It's going to be all the way back.
You're not leaving a hole there?
Correct, no.
Something cool.
I don't want to swim.
There you go. That was the trouble with the proposed industrial park and backyard or the golf course, yeah. Rachel, this is an inter-office memo, which really tells you that the inland wetlands approval, that just says we should be notified of it, doesn't say...
Correct. So they, we, we sent out our packet so quickly after the inland wetlands approval that we don't have the actual, we didn't have the final memo at that time.
Okay, so what do we have, so you're going to...
So they, all conditions required by inland wetlands will apply, and we should include that wetlands number as a condition of this approval, just to tie them back together formally.
Yeah, I know, but how about this aquifer deal?
I'm looking through them now. So the aquifer protection is really regulating those uses that are going to negatively impact the aquifer. The whole point of this project is to remediate the groundwater and therefore the aquifer.
But we would, yeah, but they're the one, we, the aquifer protection agency is the one to determine whether or not it's going to impact it.
Right, so what I'm looking through here...
And we could have a finding of no impact, just like the wetlands has a finding of no impact.
Right, so what I'm looking through here is to determine if it, if it says, if, just to quickly do a quick review and see if it says anything about remediation and whether or not that requires aquifer protection. So as you guys keep talking, I'll...
Don't you have a list of questions, or?
Oh, yeah, okay, okay. All right, one question was, does this mean the station's being abandoned?
Uh, as of this point, I'm, we're not sure of what the, what the outcome of the station and the future of the station will entail. We, all we know is that, that Alliance Energy wants the tanks removed.
So is Alliance Energy the owner of the property?
That is correct.
Okay, so then it's up to them what their disposal would be, okay. I didn't know, because this also includes the removal of the building?
Uh, this, our application does not include the removal of the building at all. It does, we...
No, I know. I, do you know what their intent is to remove the building?
No, I do, we do not. I do not know if they plan on removing the canopy, removing the building.
Because I know it mentions in there that it's a convenience store and a gas station.
Correct, it is right now.
I didn't know if you were going to leave it as a convenience store with, with gravel, so...
Doesn't know it's not part of the designation.
I don't think they'll be operating as a, as a, as a gasoline station, and hence the retail portion of it will not be operated as well. But I, I can't, I don't know how long it, it will be down for. Maybe they have a buyer in place right now, maybe they don't.
When you said that you're not going to pave, but you're going to leave gravel.
Correct.
I just, if you have the store there, they're driving on gravel, which, that's, that's all, so it's...
Well, there's going to be nobody driving on it, because it's, the station is going to be closed, and it's going to be fenced off to the public, so there's going to be no access to that portion of property.
You're planning on leaving the fence up?
Until, we don't plan on leaving the fence up indefinitely, but once, once the, the ground surface is returned, is returned back to grade, it'll be gravel. It won't be asphalt, but...
Right.
It's, it'll be safe to drive over. It'll be compacted.
Well, that's what I'm getting after. That's, that's, again, another sensitive, let's say, visual site in town. I hate to see the fence up there for... Is the fence being removed, let's say, when you finish your extraction of the tank and returning it to level, to the grade?
The fence will then be removed, yes.
Okay, that's all, that's...
There would be no reason for the site protection any longer at that point in time, because the, the tripping hazards will be eliminated.
And again, the soil, you're going to have to, it will be removed as soon as, let's say, it's de-watered?
Uh, it, it won't be removed immediately. Depending on the saturation levels of the soil as we've removed them, we may need to stage them on-site at the time, because the, the trucks won't be able to mobilize if it's... What's that?
The Wetlands Agency took care of all that.
Correct. We've, we've discussed all of those things with the wetlands commission as well.
Okay. Well, so you remove that, and, and any remediation to the water stays there, or what? Are you closing that down?
Uh, it will be discharged into a frac tank. We'll collect the sample from it. We'll then determine if it's acceptable to go into the POTW system, the sanitary sewer system, get the necessary permits to allow it to be discharged, and then discharge it as necessary. And once we've completed the activities, the frac tank will be removed from the site.
That's it, okay. Well, then I guess what I'm after is, in back of seventy-one, seventy-three, seventy-five, and seventy-seven is the extraction material, I guess, or you had, are you closing that down, or is that gone, or... In other words, there's a plume apparently, or has been, under there. Has that been sufficiently taken care of, or?
Uh, not to this point. There are still some residual impacts across the street on the, on the... Across Hazard Avenue and...
I just said, I gave you the numbers.
There are some residual, but the thought process is, is that we're removing the source area. We're removing the soil and groundwater associated with the source of the issue, and that once that happens, that natural attenuation over time will address the downgrading petroleum hydrocarbons.
Is that, but is that unit, is that unit staying over there?
Uh, there, there isn't a unit there now. They had operated it before. That, that unit is gone. The, and there is a, a sump system that feeds the seventy-six property, which is strange that you mentioned it before. The seventy-six, uh, I can't remember the name of the street.
Uh, Palumba?
Palumba, thank you. The, the ice cream shop, and there's M.R.D. that operates, that occupies the other portion of that building. There's a sump system there that we manage and operate that portion. But the larger scale remedial, remediation system is no longer on the property.
Because that was a big trailer, too, that's, or a container that sat out there.
Correct.
And that's been removed?
Correct.
All right, I wasn't aware of that, okay. I guess, then your, your soil will be going to the same place as you said in the last one, probably.
Correct. Much easier than the last one.
Good, oh, yeah. Yes, Peter.
Uh, when you store the soil to de-water it, how do you do that?
When I store the soil to de-water it...
Just dump it on the ground, let the water run out?
What I'm going to do is I'm, I'm going to dig a test pit first. It's going to be a pretty small test pit, and I'm going to put a, a submersible pump in the ground. Water is at about three feet below grade. I want to excavate to the bottom to about ten, so I'm going to install my submersible pump to about thirteen feet. I'm going to allow it to run before I start to dig. I'm going to drop the water table down to about ten feet, and it'll, it'll be somewhat wet still, but not saturated. And then I'm, then I'm going to start my digging activities.
Where did that water go that you just pumped out of the ground?
The frac tank. I'll have it in the frac tank to be stored, and then I'll have to sample it and then discharge it into the POTW, into the sanitary sewer system.
You indicated you were going to test the water, and you indicated that if it passed, you'd take it off-site someplace. What if it doesn't pass?
Uh, we're going to, we're going to treat it. We're going to treat it. We're going to have carbon units on-site to, to treat the discharged water, waters, because it has to meet certain limits before it can be discharged into the sanitary sewer system. So we, we have to meet those limits, so...
Okay, now, at the other side, you had a trailer. What are you going to have over here to, to do all that work that you're saying needs to be done?
Uh, well, it's not going to be a trailer, per se. It's going to be carbon units. There'll be five-hundred-pound, we haven't specked out the carbon units as of just yet, but the, there'll be the five-hundred-pound carbon units, a thousand-pound carbon units, however many in series to get to the levels that we need to, and then be able to discharge into the sanitary sewer system.
So they're not in a trailer? They're just sitting out there, some tubes or something?
I'm sure they probably will be in some sort of enclosure, but...
Can you explain how, can you state how long you expect this one to last?
Oh, this one should be fairly short. I mean, we're, I mean, I'd say two weeks maximum that we'd be out there at this particular site.
Well, the carbon units...
Actually, I shouldn't say maximum. I'll, I'll say two weeks is what we anticipated to take.
Will the carbon units be on a truck or somewhere, or they'll be just sitting out there on the open, on the pavement?
They'll come in a trailer.
Oh, okay, there'll be a...
Like a temporary...
A wheeled trailer, okay.
Okay.
And then with the prior one, we said the, 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 the material you collect as you're treating the soil can't be stored on-site. Will this be the same? Will you be, when you get a carbon unit that needs to be removed, will you be removing it completely, immediately, or storing it on-site, or removing it like the last one?
For the, for this particular site, since it is such a small, it's not a long-term operation. We don't anticipate that when the spent, when the carbon is done, we'll probably be finished with our activities. And then they'll be removed from the site upon completion.
Okay. I don't know that I got an answer. I was asking, how do you drain the water out of the soil? You said, oh, I dig a hole, and I pump the water out of the ground, but we never got the... After you dig the dirt out, if it's got water in it, how do you get the water out? Just put it in a pile? You put it in a trailer? Put it in a dump truck? What do you do with it? Drain the water out?
Well, when the, when the water table is depressed, it will, it will lose some of its saturation just from that process by itself.
Okay.
When, when it comes out of the ground, it'll have less of a saturation percentage associated with it.
So you can just truck it off-site?
I can truck it off-site if it's not dripping wet with water, because if that happens...
And if it is dripping with water, what do you do?
I'm going to have to stage it on-site to allow it to drain.
What is the staging method? Just put it in a dump truck and let it run out?
No, I'll have, I'll have poly lining at, on, put on the asphalt. I'll place the, my soil that's saturated or wet on top of this poly and allow it to drain, and I'll have my silt fence and, and around it to be protective. And then once it's sufficient and drained, we'll then transport it off-site.
Okay, thank you.
There would be in his Wetlands thing, I guess, which we didn't get.
I was just curious.
No, I know, I would be, too.
That's fine.
Or hot-sunny day preparation.
It's covered in that, yeah. I guess it would be covered in the Wetlands permit. Anything further, the questions?
So to update on the aquifer protection, I've looked through it, just, I mean, this is very preliminary, and Ginny is much more familiar with this document than I am.
Yep.
But really, this is a, this is the corrective action to everything that's in here that's a regulated activity, would be to go, that the regulated activity is things like storing oil on-site. Corrective action if something goes wrong is to do some remediation. And then the other thing is that the, the limits of the area are, are the limits that are shown on our maps, which is that corner of the property.
Then a note from her in the file that there is no activity in the, in the aquifer area?
Before signing?
I, I believe that according to emails that I have from her, that she was going to issue that notice tomorrow pending approval of today's activity.
Okay, but that's what we need for the aquifer.
I'm not sure which comes first.
It would have been nice here if we'd had it, just to cover us and her, too.
So I'll put something in, I'll make it, it'll be condition number six, I think, uh, number five, with five becoming six. That, and then it'll be that same.
That there's no activity in the aquifer protection area?
Right, we'll confirm that there's no activity in the aquifer, to confirm that boundary.
So does that mean that I don't need approval? Well, I'm going to have approval from the wetland agent, being Ginny, in the form of a memo.
That's a Wetlands agent. The problem is, because of the state regulations, we're the aquifer protection agency, too.
Oh, okay.
So...
Everyone's wearing, everyone sort of wears dual hats in this, that they are the agency, but Ginny is the commissioner?
Yeah.
And looking through, there are some things that are in her purview to make a determination on?
Yep.
And then report that to you, so that would be the...
Well, this would be, and then so number six is that as she determines in a memo, in the file, that there is no activity in the aquifer protection agen, area, which is what he said.
Fine, so we'll do that. That's going to be five.
Number six.
New number, oh, okay.
It would be six, and everything else gets numbered down.
Everything else is a straight number.
Okay, so make it six.
Yeah.
Okay, then everything else is taken care of?
Down to nineteen.
I have a question.
Yes.
I didn't see anything in there for bonding, in particular for site remediation. Do we, do we leave it looking like a war zone, like a building blew up, and you've just got a bunch of rubble or trap rock and concrete? Or do you go out and put some dirt on, plant some grass, make it look decent?
Same, same as the last one.
Uh, that area is, is already paved, so putting grass in that area would look a little bit weird. As, not knowing what the property's going to be used for, we're, we're not planning to re-put the asphalt back down, and then somebody else buys the property and tears everything up.
No, I'm not suggesting that, but when you leave the site, it should look halfway decent, without like a big dome.
Okay, so, yeah, he's right. You've got the same thing here as we had in the last time. You got number eight is site improvement. Number nine is erosion sediment control. Ten is landscaping, but they're not going to do landscaping, but so instead of landscaping, is a site...
Restoration.
Restoration.
Right, and I think this might be, this might be an issue with our standard conditions. I'll check with John if the site improvement is the same thing as the site restoration, or if they're two different things.
No, so, no, well, we've always continued...
They might be two different things.
Two different things.
I'm not sure what that means to me.
So the...
But that, back to grade and that it's restored, as we said, you want the, the fence down, we just... We just don't want it left like piles of dirt here, piles of trash over here and so forth. Like you said, the fence has to be removed. We just want it looking neat.
Well, we, we plan on doing that upon our departure, but-
Well, we have to make sure.
Correct. Beyond that timeframe, uh, we do not plan to leave the fence up, so, and not knowing what the usage of the property is, cars could probably park there. I'm not sure what activities could happen.
Fence is removed at the completion of-
Right.
So perimeter fence is removed.
Okay, that's-
Back under the-
Now, the, I mean, the property owner should, should alliance come forth and decide that they wanna fence their property while they're not utilizing it. That is within their-
Not a temporary fence. They'd have to meet our fence requirements for-
The six foot.
Generally.
Yeah. So the temp- temporary fences shall be removed at the completion of the remedial action.
Right.
What number is that and where is it?
It'll be nineteen, uh, which will actually be twenty because we're renumbering.
Under the general commission?
Yeah.
Well, yeah. Uh, now, number seventeen, you have down for five years. Is that, you, you?
So that is our standard.
Valid for five, I know, but you don't need them, you don't need them.
So one-
I don't know. It just seems crazy to say that you're given an approval for five years when he says he's gonna be in and out of there within a short two weeks.
Isn't that a state requirement, five years? Aren't we mandated to do that?
We can't do that, yeah.
Okay, okay. All right, I guess you're right.
We can't do that.
It just seems crazy.
So you can stay for five years.
Take you five years to take care of it. All right.
A spoon, a spoonful.
This is a public hearing. I know this is a here, but.
So anything else we set? You wanna read the, you have any problems with the conditions or any of the ones we talked about?
I'm still trying to wrap my head around the aquifer protection agency. It seems like you wear, you guys wear dual hats, so you're approving the aquifer protection agency portion as well.
We're gonna do is try to take care of it with a memo from Ginny that we don't, don't have to get involved.
Okay.
All she do, needs to do is put a thing in the file and say that you're not doing any activity in the aquifer. You said you're on the edge of it.
Correct.
So, that's, all she has to do is verify for us that that's where it is.
This is what it should say.
Okay.
But she has to put it in writing, so.
I'm trying right here.
We made it a condition.
That's, that's just made it a condition.
Right, so-
Because I, I, I guess I should've called her, but I called her and she's busy. Uh, but I picked that up, but I didn't wanna hold you up.
Well, it just seems like-
I wanted to say, if I can get four together, if we have a problem, I can, these, these people are pretty good. If, if I can get four together, we'll have a quick meeting. It'll be special, and we need twenty-four hours to-
You have to post that. It would be the aquifer protection agency meeting. This is-
Yeah, but just, just for that.
But it shouldn't be an issue, cause it's, again, this is the corrective action.
If it's an issue, I don't wanna hold it up.
Just in case. Okay.
In fact, we could even have in the middle of the daytime. I don't care.
Well, I-
I doubt it's going to be an issue, cause again, this is that corrective action that any, any of those normal regulated activities in an aquifer, this is how we fix, fix them.
Is that how you fix it?
Okay.
Okay, well.
Well, I, the, the confusing part for me was the, only that Ginny is saying that I need approval from the aquifer protection agency. You guys are saying, I need a memo from Ginny. So it seems like it's-
Ginny and Rachel will straighten it out. Yeah. Ginny and Rachel will straighten it out.
She takes care of the, uh, uh, the wetlands, and then she takes care of the aquifer for us.
Right.
We couldn't figure out, but it was the state's determination that we should handle aquifer, and even though the wetlands should be aquifer, they aren't. So, that, that's determination of the state for some reason.
It's a little confusing sometimes.
And where would we get the requirements for the bond amount?
Um, that'll-
Town engineer does that.
So you'll have to, there's a step in, in completing the applications is that at once, when an approval is completed, that then there are the conditions that have to be met prior to signing. Once that signature is on the plans, then the engineer will set a bond, and that will happen when you apply for those permits for, uh, starting the work.
Okay.
Okay, so, what I have for conditions is we've got grand total of twenty with an added condition number six, and that would read, "A memo to the file shall be submitted by the aquifer protection commissioner, confirming that activity is taking place outside the aquifer protection area."
Yep.
Um, condition number eleven, which looks like ten on the sheets in front of you, will be changed from landscape bond to the site restoration bond, and that, uh, the note to John on that would be that you're looking for that restored to grade, um, condition.
Another came up on the show.
And then-
You had its signs on there. Are you gonna remove the signs, or you, I mean, why would you leave signs if the place is closed?
Signs, like the gasoline station signs that brand it?
Yeah. I mean, we just gave a new with the price so that they could display their price and all that. Are you leaving that out there?
That's-
Has nothing to do with us.
I have no idea what that activity is.
I mean, you're closing the station.
Another issue.
No, I guess it is. No, all right.
Just the environmental component.
Yeah, I don't, we don't know what their plans are for this property at all, so.
Well, Ginny, if, I guess maybe later, if the signs stay there too long, is to contact the company, have Ginny or-
Right, but again, they, they could reopen in two weeks after they, they finish their work.
I know they could. And redig the holes and put new tanks in, yeah.
Your last condition, would that, did that have to do with removal of the temporary fence, or did you mention something else?
That'll be next. So this will be that the applicant shall post a site restoration bond to the town in an amount and format to be determined by the, um, by the town engineer and not the planning department. In an amount to be determined by the plant, by the town engineer, yeah. Uh, to be determined by the town engineer, and then just on an aside, not as part of that condition, is that the note to John is that what you're looking for is to bond for the restoration of the site grade at that point. Condition number nineteen, so condition number twenty, which is the one that's added, is that temporary fences shall be removed at completion, upon completion of the remedial action.
Right. Okay. Any problems?
Yes, and, uh, the one, one thing I discovered, all right, that you have an error on your memo.
Yeah.
Says it's twenty-seven ninety-one with a hundred Hazard Avenue, I mean, a hundred L Street.
Got copied over.
I called you on that. That was another part of my thing, and I told, uh, Barbara this morning, and Barbara says, well, we could take care of that tonight.
Yes, so we're gonna read not from that, read again, read from the, the public hearing, the public, that public notice, the one that was published in the paper, that is the, that is the be all and end all. That's what everyone out in the world has heard. What I've written to you guys, sometimes I make mistakes.
Yeah.
Yes. Okay.
Cause she's trying to do too many things at once.
This is a public hearing. We have to, this, this is-
I know. Okay, anybody in the public would like to speak in favor against this application? Anyone in the public would like to speak in favor against this application? Last call to speak in favor against this application. Hearing done.
I'll make-
To keep it open? Okay, then I'll close, uh, public hearing twenty-seven ninety-one.
I'll make a motion to re-
Ninety-two? I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Oh, yes, I, I reading off of that. Public hearing twenty-seven ninety-two, I just closed.
I will make a motion to waive the full sufficient requirements of section nine point ten point two, because the commission finds that the information is not necessary in order to decide on the application's conformance with these regulations.
Second. Motion's made, seconded. Any discussion? Hearing done. All in, uh, car roll.
For Elizabeth Ballard.
Yep.
Peter, Peter Falk, for Kathleen Sarno.
Four.
Char- Ron Gregory.
Four.
Alan Drynan.
Four.
Thank you, everybody.
I will make a mo- I will make a motion to approve public hearing twenty, uh, seven ninety-two, special use permit to perform excavation of soil in excess of six hundred cubic yards for the purposes of conducting remediation at seventy-six Hazard Avenue in a business local BL district. Map fifty-six, lot sixteen, Antia Group applicant, Alliance Energy LLC owner, subject to the twenty conditions in a memorandum from Rachel Black dated May nineteenth, two thousand fourteen, which in-
May ninth.
May ninth, two thousand fourteen, which includes, uh, added, uh, conditions. Uh, number six, uh, that a memo to file from the aquifer protection agent, uh, will be secured, prior to signing of the plans, indicating that no, uh, there is no aquifer in activity involvement. Renumbering then with a new number eleven, which will read, "The applicant shall post a site restoration bond in an amount and format determined by the town engineer," and a new, uh, item number twenty, indicating that temporary fences shall be removed upon completion of the remediation. Any more?
Nope.
That's it.
Second.
Motion's made, seconded. Any discussion? Hearing done. Take the roll.
Charles Stern.
Four.
Elizabeth Ballard.
Four.
Peter Falk, four. Kathleen Sarno.
Four.
Ron Gregory.
Four.
Alan Drynan.
Four.
Five, oh, I'm sorry. Six, six zero zero. Done both of them. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My parents were in Milford. I grew up in Pittsburgh, so you're all in the general area.
Some people from there.
Yep.
Thank you, everybody.
Good night.
And again, thank you, Rachel, for all your-
Thank you. Okay. And, uh, old business none, new business none, other business none, applications to be received.
All right. We had some trouble with the printer, so give me just a moment. I think there's actually enough copies for everyone here.
Uh, while she's doing that, look at your workshop date is June twelfth. Uh, now, are these regulations all done by the, the-
So the Cecil group will be tackling, um, three items.
Are they finished for the twelfth? Will we have them?
They will be here in person on the twelfth.
Okay.
And they're gonna be presenting, so what we're looking at in terms of timelines for them is that, uh, that they'll, they're gonna be a little bit further along in the process with, uh, the poultry and the commercial vehicles. And then, you know, knowing that the medical marijuana is a lot bigger of a project, and the timeline's a little bit, uh, longer, that they're gonna present some ideas. It's sort of like what we did at the May eighth, where we'll do some discussion. We're gonna do discussion of some, and get some feedback on components of that, but they're gonna be a little bit further along in the process for those first two.
That's gotta get done. I saw today in the paper that one of the companies that was given a permit had to relocate in another town. Uh, and it was at the last minute, because whatever the town they were going in, uh, they couldn't, I don't know, for some reason, they didn't go.
You'll have to share a little bit.
That's okay.
Okay, we gotta share, so pass them down, and you have to share this one.
I've got more first pages, but the second page refused to print.
No, Charlie can have a copy and we can share.
Okay.
Do you need a copy of them?
I got this. I got two, the two pages. Public hearing twenty-seven ninety-three, housing for the elderly, thirteen ninety-six King Street.
Sixteen ninety-six King.
Sixteen ninety-six King.
So this is, this one, um, this is, they're happy with the age restriction at sixty-two?
I'm sorry. This, this is age restriction.
This is age restricted. This is the, the three, this is the version of age restricted housing that's independent apartment-style living as opposed to the, the, um, single-family subdivisions.
Okay, yeah.
Um, but this one, because they are so close to the, um, they are so close to the East Windsor line at this site, I do think we have to go to Crog for a project of this size. So I, I would recommend for this one actually to go, it's June nineteenth would be the second date, because I think we, we will need to wait for those responses from Crog.
Okay.
Uh, yeah, okay.
So I'm anticipating that that date is probably gonna be, um, we have, since we have so many on this list, that, since we're gonna wait for Crog.
Could you give me just offhand where sixteen ninety-six is?
So right is actually basically right down at the, at the town line. Um, so it's just, it's gonna be, if you're not looking north along Route five, it's to the left, so west of Route five.
With, uh, what's the-
Right now, it's a single-family house with a large piece of land that goes all the way back to ninety-one. And it's basically across the street from where the Metro North property is. And it's currently in R thirty-three district, so it is an allowable use.
Just below the town garage, I mean, the highway department.
By East Windsor line?
East Windsor. East Windsor, so all the way down, south end of town.
Okay.
So just north of Burlington, if you, right in East Windsor is Burlington Coat Factory.
Right.
So it's like three or four houses north of that.
Right.
There's no train up there. He said Metro North?
Isn't that the Metro North?
That's the development. Across the street, what's the name of it? The Tower?
Oh, it's at the- The Medical something?
Well, that's where it is, though.
Yeah, all the way down. There's a huge piece of industrial land. We do, zone it, industrial one M. That's across the street.
It's just before Burlington Mills.
Okay.
On a-
All right, yeah.
There's a little street.
Very, very far southern end of town.
You would have to notify them.
Yeah, so I do think we have to notify, I think they're within that five hundred foot range where we'll have to do that. Um, and with this long list, I think, and it's a big project, I think we should probably do the nineteenth.
I agree.
Quick question, I guess we do have, so where's that for?
We do, yes.
Okay.
Prince Candy Castle?
Uh, twenty-seven ninety-four.
Okay.
Three.
Um, so this is, um, uh, three, it's three Palumba Drive. There's three businesses on that property. This is, um, the new Town Fair Tire, uh, what was the Saturn dealership, now Town Fair Tire. There's Midas, and then there's the Anfield Collision Center.
Right.
The Midas, uh, property, the Midas building, they, they are looking to add a license to sell pre-owned vehicles. Um, and because that is a change, and it's a change that requires a special permit, it would be a public hearing.
Okay.
So is it the same, Midas that wants to sell it, or?
It is that, that, yeah, that same, that facility will be the-
Yeah, are they changing from Midas to?
No. They will, it will continue to have a garage. I'm not sure if they will, I believe that they will continue the Midas relationship, um, but they will be, continue to have the repair component and add, it's just an, it's an addition of a, of a sale.
By the way, he still has a sandwich board outside there. No, that's all right. All right, uh, text change.
Um, so date on that one, June fifth or June nineteenth? I think it's a, it's a fairly straightforward. There's no construction.
So, and you've got-
So June fifth, you wanna do that one?
I think it's a, yeah, I would recommend June fifth on that one.
What else have we got on that?
Well, we'll see. This is the full list. We've got five total.
Too heavy, because the Thompsonville people will be out.
Right, and, and hopefully so.
Yes.
Okay.
But I would say that that's a fairly, it's, they're, they're aren't doing any construction. It's really just adding that use component and shifting their parking, which parking spaces are which.
Fourteen oh three, we can do it at the same time?
So fourteen oh two and fourteen oh three are, would go together. Fourteen oh two is, um, the, the text chain, the, the text components, and fourteen oh three is the map components.
Now, do we, let me ask you, we got anything else that they?
On the fifth?
Yeah. Cause I, I'm concerned about, cause you've got this with the cars, and then these other two.
It's, it's up to the commission.
Or June nineteenth.
Right, you can choose. I mean, it is up to the commission to make that determination.
Well-
If you wanna hear, wait and do the Midas one at the end.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would.
Yeah, Thompsonville may or may not take a long time, so, and that's top priority.
And again, that will go to, I mean, this will go to Crog too, in addition to the, um, the ninety-two units, but I think that's a lot. I think doing both the zoning and the, the housing for the same night is gonna be too much.
Yeah.
And I anticipate that, you know, we will hear probably back from both, on both projects from Crog, cause there's a, this extra week.
So on the agenda have, uh, the Thompsonville, the two Thompsonville first, or one and two, and then have the, uh, special permit of the vehicle, uh, item with three.
Okay.
Got a site plan review too.
Okay, site plan review.
This is a pretty small one, um, and it could even be an administrative approval if, if you all agree to it. It's, it's a, this is ninety, uh, Pearl Street, um, and my copy is the old copy, sorry, it, it can't, it print- It's, it's a, this is 90 Pearl Street and my copy is the old, sorry, it, it printed poorly.
It's where?
I apologize. This is, this is an error of the printer.
Site plan review.
Don't read what's on there.
It's...
Don't read what's on there.
Don't read what's on there.
Elm Street.
It's copied from several weeks ago.
Okay.
I was going to say, I thought we did that in the facade of the Rockaway.
The number is correct. It is, it is 1623.
Okay.
I was fighting with the printer. And the project is, this is, it's a change of use at 90 Pearl Street, which is, it's the lower building, it's got hexagonal windows.
Okay.
They're octagonal windows. And it's someone who's looking to change the use from retail to personal services. And they are going to, looking to open a salon that focuses on dreadlocks.
Repeat that, please.
Sure. So 90, 90 Pearl Street is the location.
Right.
There, it's a site, it's a site plan review for a change of use from retail to personal services. They would be opening a, it's a braiding salon that focuses on hair...
Hair salon.
Right.
Yep.
Focusing on dreadlocks. And it would be no exterior changes, just the change of use. So it's a site plan review. It could be done...
That sounds like a quickie.
Yeah. It could be done as an administrative approval, but that's up to the commission. If you, if you'd like to see them come in...
To see it, yeah.
Yeah, no, they can come in.
Yeah.
Again, that would be after, uh...
It would be the last on the agenda because it's, site plan reviews are always after the public hearings.
Well, unless you move it up to, what have you got for...
That'd be a shame to make that person sit all the way through those two long public hearings when they're probably going to be in and out of here.
How about that public hearing up above where you got for the housing for the elderly?
I would recommend doing that June 19th. I think that's going to need a little more time on, on staff and, and with Crog too, that I think June 19th is going to be a more realistic date to really advertise.
Well, yeah, but you got, you got hearing dates, you got June 19th. You aren't going to do that one on the 19th, the housing?
June 19th.
Yeah, but you got, okay.
April and May you got on there.
I know, it's...
Okay. So we're doing the two, we're doing three on June 5th.
So June 5th right now looks like we would start with the Thompsonville zoning.
Yeah.
Do the text and the map.
And then the...
And then if we get to it, the, the sale of the vehicles. And then if we get to the, further down to the, to the salon, you want to see all, push the salon to the next one, you know, realistically that might be, that might be more realistic in terms of time in the evening.
So I think so, yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's why, yeah.
So 19th on the salon.
19th on the salon, so we can get them in and out of here.
And you'll see it all really clearly written next.
Yeah.
So the 19th will be the salon and also elderly, the 2793.
If they're ready, if they're ready.
If they're ready.
But put the salon for, oh, the salon, they can't...
Well, we can, that's the, we have to do public hearings first unless we take items out of order that night.
We can vote to take it out of order that night.
Yes, we'll take it out of order that night.
Okay, we'll do that then.
Yeah, just remind us to do that because we've always done that and there's no sense in keeping them here for that.
Yeah, if it's a small, because they're going to be very short, I think, versus the, I think you're going to need a lot more.
Oh, yeah.
Because we are sending that out to get some, a lot of feedback, just that final, we've had ARTs on the housing for the elder, we've had two different ones actually, but I think there's probably still going to be some more feedback, so we'll give it, that gives us a little more time to get everyone on the same page and make sure we get those final reviews.
Now, this hair salon, do they have to go through revitalization?
They do, so they, they, well, we referred it to them, but there's no exterior changes, so we'll be curious to see what they say.
Yeah.
But we did give them, we did send Peter something and Revite will be meeting next week, so they'll have it available.
What's the activity in there now, a store, you said?
It's a, it's been retail in the past. I think it was a, sort of an arts supply, something, it's the one that's, if you look through the windows right now, it's a lot of...
Tattoos?
No.
There was a tattoo.
I don't think so. I think this was, it was a retail space.
Was that a...
I think it was arts, like an art gallery kind of a space before.
Okay, well, we'll find out. Okay, then modifications for administrative approval unless you've done, have you got another one?
Um...
Any more?
There are two.
Okay.
So the first one is, at, over at the Yard House, they were approved for an, for a modification a few months ago to change their material and the curb line was not, is not, does not follow, it got lost partway through. So the version of the plans that, you know, we discussed don't have the full curb and they need a full curb around the parking lot with the, with the change from gravel to pavement.
Where's this?
So they're ready to pour pavement, but they, they want to actually do a curb of the whole way.
But they've been parked on the grass, like, that they're going to, they're going to pay, they're going to pay.
They're going to do full pavement.
Okay.
Rather, it was originally approved with gravel.
Yep. I make a motion to approve administrative approval of SPR 1583.02 by Assistant Town Planner Rachel Blatt.
And in consultation with?
In consultation with Town Engineer Traffic.
And Traffic, yeah.
Well, they've already seen, I mean, this is, there's no change to the layout, it's just adding the curb, so...
Okay.
Probably just engineer.
The curb is going to affect, is the curb going to affect the entrance and exits?
No, it's around the side that they, it's, the curb is shown on almost all sides, it's just one side where it got dropped.
All right, well, okay.
It's extending the curb, okay, that's my motion.
I've been by the property a number of times, all right, and I noticed that Cameron Construction, all right, did all the excavation work there and right now it is got, they put process down and then they put a layer of, I would say, real fine trap rock or something.
Yeah, compact.
And they haven't, and it's been compacted down and I would say they're getting ready to, you know, asphalt and that's why they're asking for the...
Right, so they, they've already been approved, the 1502, 1583.02 is that same number, it's just that we would be adding the curb line.
Motion's made, seconded for administrative approval. Any discussion? Yes?
Roll call.
Roll call, you're right.
Charles Dern.
Four.
Elizabeth Ballard.
Four.
Peter Falk.
Four.
Kathleen Sarno.
Four.
Ronald Gregory.
Four.
Alan Drynan.
Four.
Okay. And then the next one that came in, this is modifications to 199 Freshwater Boulevard. This is Camerata Truck Parts we approved back in the fall. They took over what was a vacant building and are doing some manufacturing there. They, the modifications that they're proposing are related to some handicap access requirements from the building department that they need to add in a couple, relocate the spaces for their handicap spaces and then make some adjustments to the sidewalk ramp, including the area around the generator pad, that they would be adding a motorcycle parking space in front of that pad. What was, and that's related again to that transition of spaces, that they're left the space that's where the generator would be, that wouldn't be deep enough for a full space so that they could park a motorcycle there instead. And then over at the loading docks, they would upgrade from just the pavement that's currently in place to a full concrete pad so that it, full concrete, so that the trucks don't sink. So that was, that's the long, the laundry list of things that they're looking to modify.
And this one would need the engineer.
Okay, I'll make a motion to allow Assistant Town Planner Rachel Blatt to administratively approve SPR 1603.02, subject to review by the town engineer.
Second.
Any discussion? Take the roll.
Charles Dern.
Four.
Elizabeth Ballard.
Four.
Peter Falk.
Four.
Kathleen Sarno.
Four.
Ronald Gregory.
Four.
Alan Drynan.
Four.
Motion passes. Six zero zero. I keep forgetting to do that.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Well, wait, let's see if, wait a minute, Rachel, they still have some more.
I think that's everything.
Good job.
Good job.
Okay.
So who motioned to adjourn?
Need a roll call for that?
Just raise your hands.
Raise your hand, we're all in favor.
All right.